St. George Central time.
I'm gonna make sure you got it.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, I'm going to this conference in Phoenix and things start at, you know, eight thirty in the morning there, which is gonna be, you know, just totally weird, three hours different right now. Insert them the other way though.
It'll be interesting if you're feeling up to it.
Yeah, it will be interesting.
It's six.
All right, it's six o'clock, we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the states of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm not aware of any adjustments to the agenda, is anybody else?
Since it was posted on Friday, two things were added, but that was updated this morning. So if you're using the one that was, you were all sent that one as well this morning, so.
Okay.
Oh, sorry Judy, you were not, but there is a copy, I apologize, I'll try to remember to do so.
All right. Do select board members have any conflicts of interest?
No.
No. The minutes of the last meeting, this, I dropped the ball on this, so we'll have to review them and prove them at the next meeting, sorry about that. Do people have any communications from the public they'd like to share?
No.
And Irene handed out.
We did, we received one about Ridge Church Road.
Oh, right, why don't you go ahead and just share that?
A resident reached out about Ridge Church Road and saying that it was in really tough shape. Described it as almost impassable. I knew it was in tough shape, I'd been down there that, this spring, maybe not since then. And I didn't think it was, what I would describe as almost impassable, but I sent Steve down to check it out today. And so he and I will connect on it, but it, it's due up in our road plan. But, you know, right now, it really only does lead to the cemetery, which is not to belittle its purpose, it's just to state, you know, when we are behind on our road plan, it is tough to put it above roads that act as thoroughfares and have folks living on them. Because to the best of my knowledge, even the church is not active anymore, so. And, you know, there used to be the road through from Ridge Road out to 131 that would go through there. But that is no longer passable, a property owner had dropped some trees and is not letting folks through. And so, you know, had that been still more open as a thoroughfare, I think I would be more inclined to, you know, keep it up on the list, but in the meantime, it'll probably be, you know, a year or two before we pay any attention to it, so.
And there's no patching or anything that would make it?
I'm not sure, so I sent Steve down today to check it out. I mean, I remembered it being bumpy, but, you know, for, I felt like that was all right for a road that nobody lived on, you know.
Dead end.
Yeah, keep folks going slow into a cemetery anyway.
And you'll get back to that person who.
Yeah, I'll reply to her once I hear from Steve about the condition of the.
Oh, it's the original main speed bump.
Yes, exactly.
Well, I was in there on Saturday morning and I think she likes it. Joyce likes it the way it is because you have to drive slow. And once they, every time they fix it, make it nice and smooth, everybody's just, the dust is flying and so it's nice that you have to go in there really slowly and.
Well, it was an older resident who visits the cemetery who said it was making it difficult for her to go there.
Okay, you just can't go fifty miles an hour.
Good.
Exactly.
But either way, I'll hear from Steve and check it out myself.
Maybe there's a really bad one, make it, put some dirt in.
Yeah, we can add cold patch, which is a very easy solution, that's cheap and immediate and we, you know, we can do in-house and so it's short term, but it does help.
And the public should be aware that if they have any road concerns, they should contact Brandon. He will always pay attention to your concerns. So the warrant Irene circulated, have people had a chance to look at this? Do people have any questions? The Island Institute payment for planning, that's that whole year for Aaron, correct? Our Island Institute fellow.
Was quite an asset to the town.
Yes, yes.
That's a bargain for us, for sure.
So if there aren't any questions, we will be approving dispersment on this warrant of one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Well, I'm not good at this, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and eighty-eight cents. Is that correct Irene? Okay. All right, we can sign that then. Are there comments from the public or anybody on Zoom about anything other than agenda items? Yes.
You mean just a question?
Sure.
Oh, Fort Clyde landing, what will you be reviewing or assessing how it's working? And where should people, I've gotten this question a lot, where should people be directing their questions or concerns or, or comments or?
Brandon, you want to respond to that?
Yeah. I mean, we're, the harbor master and myself will sort of review the facility in the off-season, so this winter, and see if there are any, you know, changes that we want to make before, you know, peak season. So floats come out October fifteenth. And so probably around then, you know, is when we sort of move into our harbors off-season and we'll begin, you know, reviewing the facility and what opportunities there are. So in the meantime, if anybody has any feedback or suggestions for the facility, they can send them to Ryan Klein, the harbor minister. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So there's a vote to delay charging interest on property taxes, you want to tell us about that?
Yeah, so our property tax bills went out a bit later this year because our commitment was filed later, which I believe you all were aware of. Jackie did a ton of work to get us caught up on our assessing that had fallen behind. There were many properties that had just been sort of tagged as visit next year for a couple of years in a row. And, you know, to approach it in the most equitable way possible, she was really committed to following up on all of those properties before running commitment. So it means that when it went out late, people still don't have their property tax bills. If they're, if they call the town office, we're able to tell them what is owed and they can pay it, you know, now, they don't need to wait for the bill. But knowing that they'll be receiving them sometime this week. The due date is September thirtieth, and so that gives them, you know, less than a month to pay their, their taxes. My recommendation to the select board, who again is also our board of assessors, would be that we don't charge any interest on late payments until November first. So essentially giving them extra time, normally that starts October first, but given the fact that the folks would have their bills for less than thirty days, I think it's a fair thing to do. We would not change the due date, the due date for property taxes was voted on at town meeting, and so I'm not suggesting we change when they are due, just when we would start assigning interest.
Sounds reasonable.
You want to make a motion, oh, yeah, Irene.
The interest date is printed on the bills. Did you, were you suggesting that I try to reach out to the French or to have those bills not sent out?
No, I believe the bills are already sent.
Those have the interest dates on them?
Right, and so we'll just communicate it on, you know, our behalf and let folks know, you know, the best we can.
The logistic, there's two ways we can do it. One of them is, I mean, to work with Frio, reverse the tax bill and then process it again with the correct interest dates on there. The other is to have the front office staff do an effective paid date other than what it's turned in. If you want the interest date to start November first, then anything we receive between October first and November fifteenth will have dated September thirtieth. That's another way of dealing with it.
Which has been done in the past, and we don't frankly need to figure out tonight unless you all think that affects your decision any. I think that you and I can spend more time on it.
We can leave that to you to figure out. So you want to make a motion, Steve, that we?
Sure, I'll move that we don't, don't start the, what's the date?
November one.
November first.
November first, start charging interest on taxes unpaid.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It's five. And I think you all probably recall that we're having a public hearing on the comprehensive plan that was approved by the state on October sixth, at five o'clock, right before our select board meeting. But we have not yet set the date for a special town meeting at which we would approve that. And unfortunately, we missed the deadline for absentee ballots to make it work, to have it be voted on, you know, on paper on November fourth.
Oh.
So I think we'll propose to have an in-person special town meeting, which requires only seven days' notice, but obviously we can give lots more notice than that if we're gonna do it sometime later in October, which we could do it again, right before a select board meeting, if we wanted to do that. People have thoughts about that? What about the staff, what would be easiest for you all?
Right before a select board meeting?
Yeah, and have it upstairs. And so I don't, we have a meeting on October sixth, what's two weeks after that?
The twentieth?
Should we do it then? At five?
Do five thirty, unless you think it'll take longer than thirty minutes.
I doubt it, but you just.
Surprised, but you never know.
Maybe we should do it at five and then again to say.
Easy thing to remember.
The select board meeting will start as soon as
Yeah.
the voting is finished on that, okay, and that will allow Bill and Tara lots of time.
That's to approve our comprehensive plan?
Oh, okay, for the whole town?
Yes, yeah, so we've had a number of different public meetings about it. There was, in June, there was a presentation with a PowerPoint and then it was submitted to the state and they approved the draft comprehensive plan and now the whole town has to vote on it. But it's on the website today, if you want to look at it, and there's also the PowerPoint that's kind of the highlights is also on the page for the comprehensive plan committee. So if people want to look at that page, you can read the whole thing or look at the PowerPoint.
I think just, my input is five o'clock is too early for those of us who work. Five thirty would be better.
Well, why don't we then say six o'clock and then whenever we're done with the town meeting, we start the select board meeting. All right, that's, that's.
Not that I'm on the critical path that I won't be here that week, I haven't, I can't tell you about it, so we'll figure out how to get minutes done.
All right.
But I'll be gone.
We'll take them the old-fashioned way, or we can do them from the recording.
Thank you Nancy. Do we need to vote on that? We probably do if it's a special town meeting, so I'm.
Yeah, you all are about to call the meeting.
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we call a special town meeting for the purpose of approving the comprehensive plan that was approved by the state on October twentieth at six o'clock.
Five o'clock or six?
Six. All in favor? That's all five of us. All right, Steve, I think you added this item to the agenda.
I didn't, I, I learned that the school board has sort of almost by default has decided not to pursue solar panels for the St. George School. Obviously, that's their right, I'm not trying to infringe on anything the school board decides to do, but I, I did feel like the public needs to know about this and our board needs to know about it. I was not at the August twentieth meeting, but I did talk to a gentleman in Guy Marshall who's been working with the school for two years anyway on this project, and he said he was quite taken aback by the fact that they sort of just dropped the ball and decided not to pursue it any further. I think some people were concerned about risks. He says the investor has all the risk, it's not, it's not a school, there's essentially zero risk to the school. And he also pointed out that you know, it, it, besides saving the school money and thereby on electricity and thereby saving the taxpayers' money in our community, that it sets a good example for the students of conservation and helping the environment. Right now, there is more than, got to figure, one point two million dollars reserved for the St. George MSU to, to fund this project. If, if the school doesn't go forward with it, then some other school will get it. He's worked with Camden and Roethlisberger schools that have solar panels on their, on their schools, solar power. And of course, we have solar power through revision at the transfer station and recently acquired all that on the, after six years, I guess. And so hit a quote from this Mr. Marshall is, this is the last hurrah. If the school board were willing to reconsider it or revisit this at their next meeting, which I believe is September seventeenth at, at the school. He thinks he could still make it happen, but otherwise it's, it's off the table.
Steve, when you say one point two million in reserve, do you mean with the commercial provider? You don't mean the school has that much set aside?
No, I mean the investor.
Okay, and would there have been any charges on the school or the school budget if they had gone ahead with this?
No.
So it would have been totally free for them to have solar panels installed?
And it may be that the school board feels a little overwhelmed with the current HVAC project going on, but, but it really would be handled by revision and wouldn't require a lot from the, from the school committee. It, it would lower the, the price of electricity for sure, and that would be a benefit over the years. He said it would add up to hundreds of thousands of dollars over many years, not right away, but, but there would be long-term savings. And I think the thing that kind of got me is there's a thirty percent tax credit and, and it will expire on December thirty-first of this year. So if, unless, unless the school board acts, we'll, we'll lose this opportunity, it's a, it's an opportunity that's gonna go away, in other words. And that's, that was kind of what I wanted people to understand. I, I did see a, a letter from Christina Watten, the superintendent, and it, saying that she hopes that maybe in the future they could continue exploring solar power for the school. But if you look at the current administration, it's very unlikely there'll be any solar programs available. It's, it's, they're going away and this is, this is the, this one is ending.
So.
At the end of the year.
I think it's important for us to note that you're raising this concern as a taxpayer, understanding that the select board doesn't have any authority over money that the school board chooses to raise for education or maintenance or anything on the property. I mean, yes, the town and the select board are charged with raising every tax dollar, both for the operation of the town and the school. And we disperse the money to the school that the voters have approved for the school, but we have no authority to tell the school board that they should do this or shouldn't do that.
I think you acknowledged that one.
Yes, you did, but I, I just want everybody to understand that you're raising this as a resident with a concern and I.
As a select person.
Well, and, and I'm very disappointed that they're not doing it, if it doesn't cost anything and there's.
It seems risk-free for the town.
We, as a select board, have no recourse other than to express disappointment like any other member of the community.
Yeah, well, you want to just express disappointment, I wanted to express the hope that maybe the school committee or school board would revisit this or reconsider their decision to abandon it, that's all.
I think their next meeting is the sixteenth. Isn't, it's Wednesday, their, their board meetings are always on Wednesday.
Aggression, they're always on. Somewhere I saw it, maybe it is the seventeenth, but it might be a mistake.
Do you know Tammy?
I'm just.
A Wednesday, whichever day that.
Okay, so.
We can check on that.
So if anybody wants to attend or share their concerns, they can do that. Did anybody else want to say?
Did you get a chance to talk to anybody on the school board or the superintendent or the principal to see why they've made this decision?
The only person I was able to reach was Mike Felton, I did send emails to the school board chairperson and to the superintendent Christina, and didn't get back from them yet.
Because I know at the last meeting, Terry Disco and Ken Oldberger had attended that meeting, but I wasn't able to stay, so I don't know what was said to possibly.
Right, Ken mentioned he thought you had to leave a little early and so.
Yeah, Susie Ellis did, I, I had a meeting on something else with Susie Ellis after the school board meeting and she did tell me that they had decided not to pursue the solar panels. But I don't know anything more than that.
I did hear that they did not take any vote, they simply just sort of, we don't, we're not going forward with this.
Maybe they're overwhelmed with everything that's going on right now.
I think that's quite possible, thanks.
Well, I know that Ken Oldberger and Terry and other people would help them if they needed help with paperwork, but it's up to them.
It's up to them, yeah. Yeah, I did, I did hear that, that Ken might be considering forming a committee that would take on the workload if, if they were willing to reconsider. But it's totally their call, not ours.
So the next item on the agenda is just to make sure people are aware of the information that we have about Colby College's press conference that was, was that? Right before Labor Day weekend.
Yeah.
And as people may have seen in the press, they're establishing a center for resilience and economic impact in Fort Clyde with funding from the Northlight Foundation.
Which is Dan and Cheryl Tishman.
Right.
At Fort Clyde.
So I don't think any of us know exactly what that will involve or how it will impact St. George. But it has potential for being a good thing and we look forward to learning more from Colby about what they have planned. Yes, Nancy?
What about the tax base, if it, you know, if they come in and purchase several pieces of the property down there, what's gonna do, what's gonna happen to our tax base? That's one of my concerns and I heard that there also is a deadline on the property where the store is. Are they purchasing that also? And if there's a deadline of, I don't know if it's October or November, they said something about the grandfathering.
I can take this one, I can buy.
Sure, go ahead.
The, there is a deadline for the store to be rebuilt based on its grandfathered status and that is in early November. There are potentially new plans that could warrant a new building permit being issued and that would extend the deadline by a year. Those plans have not been submitted yet, a new permit has not been issued yet, but there have been communications that suggest that that is likely. We have not heard anything to suggest that Colby is buying that property. Anything that is worth stating on public record is, you know, credible. And so I wouldn't, I'm not implying that by answering that part of the question. As far as the tax base goes, Colby has a pretty long track record of keeping properties on the tax roll, either by them not becoming exempt from property tax or like they do with the islands, making a donation in lieu of property taxes. And so for the islands that they own, I believe that their annual donation is right around seventy thousand dollars. And so it's not, you know, just a sort of like symbolic donation, but it, it is a substantial one, yeah, in lieu of property taxes. And he, the, the president of Colby mentioned that and that they, sort of the, the intent to do that when he was talking a lot about what they've done in Waterville before this. So I understand that concern and I think Colby does as well and, and, and knows that, you know, small towns, you know, could really struggle if a lot of waterfront property came off the, off the tax roll. Again, we don't know that it's going to be waterfront, you would assume so based on what they're hoping to do and, and choosing Fort Clyde, but there's nothing to confirm that at this point.
Well, and also we have a hundred and twenty-five miles of coastline in St. George, so even if a few properties came off the tax rolls, it's not likely to have a major impact on our overall tax base.
But what, everything that I heard from the press happens does not.
Right.
Right, does not imply that that is what would be a result of them forming this center here.
In fact, part of the center is investment, so it's not, it would be sort of contrary to not pay taxes. David, David Green was the, is the resident of Colby and he was very gung-ho about this and so was Dan Tishman in talking about this project and how they would work on resilience and, and investment. In talking about this project and how they would work on resilience and and investment. And keeping the economy going as well as environmental bad aspects.
Just the residents of Port Clyde are very concerned because nothing is really happening and um, you know. That's why I'm here, because other people couldn't come, and they just wanted to express their concern on what's going on with the store property. Um, you know, the port is dying because the store is not there. Um, you know, tenants harbor is flourishing because they've got the store and they have other things that are, you know, attracting voters. And um.
I mean, I I hear that that sentiment, but I've also heard that, you know, Squid Inc. has had. His first profitable year ever this year, and so I would argue that maybe. Things are trending up in Port Clyde and the absence of the stores is still felt. And the town acknowledges that and recognizes that, and that's part of why we are, you know. Working really intentionally with uh, you know, their team to try to help make sure that deadlines are not missed, that everything is done the way that it needs to, because we. You know, want to see a thriving village in Port Clyde.
But it's important for you to remember that the property is owned by. A corporation and what they do with their property is up to them. The town is here. And has been willing to work with them, has granted them permits, you know, the existing owner um. And indicated our willingness to work with them, but we aren't in a position to make things happen on a parcel of property. Yeah, yeah.
The um, the being estate is in probate anyway still. I mean, that's. A whole different, a whole ball, different ball of wax, but the my concern. Similarly, is that are are it? Will there be a presentation by Colby? In a public town meeting? I mean, the only thing we know is what we read in the paper, unless we were privileged enough to be invited. To the private whatever it was that they had down on the dock. We all feel like. You know, here we go again. We've got, even though it's Colby. It's education, it's resilience, it's all these terms which are good, and I see it as a really positive thing. But again, it's like a select group of people are coming in and deciding. What's gonna happen to this tiny village of ours and. But the, I'm not even a native person. I've only been here fifteen years, but I come from a place that's very similar, even smaller than this. It just doesn't wash well with people. We we don't know what's going on. We just don't have a sense of. Forget the, forget the being stuff. Now we've got a whole other entity that's coming, even though I think that what they've done on the island is great. What Phyllis did with Herring, that is great. All of that is a super positive thing. It can't be couched any other way.
Well.
We just don't know what's, we don't know.
Right.
We're not like this one group of people that seem to be sitting there Thursday night at the barn, winking at each other. If you're not in that group, you don't know what's sorry, it's just the way it is in Port Clyde, you know, it is.
So the select board um basically also knows what was in the paper. The select board members were invited to that event and um. Several of us went to that event um and afterward, I did send to President Green and Dan Tishman. An email sharing our comprehensive plan for Saint George that was based on, you know, multiple surveys and interviews. Of people in Saint George, including Port Clyde, about where we want to see our town go in the next ten years. So that and sharing information about the resilience efforts that the resilience um committee has made and is making. So they at least know um what we've been working on here. And the response that I got was that they're in the process of hiring a director for this program. And once the director is on board, he or she will meet with um people in the community to. To talk more about what comes next. So. Um, we will um, we will continue to share with you what we know. But basically what we know is what we've shared tonight and what was what you've all seen in the media. All right, the next thing is about the cell service um. Efforts to improve cell service in town. Um, a number of residents, particularly in Port Clyde, have repeatedly. Raised this issue and, you know, we're a small town that doesn't. Have an economic development director, anybody who, yeah, right. Who who's in charge of working with utility providers um in our town. But um, we did get together a group of people um. To explore what, if anything, can we do to improve um cell service in town, particularly in Port Clyde where it's. So poor and um I wasn't able to attend that, but Brandon did, so maybe you could tell us more.
Um, essentially what came out of it was uh a couple of next steps uh. You know, reaching out to folks in the community, uh really trying to hear from. Um, well. The town as well as our EMS department, not to to really highlight that there's a public safety concern uh. As well as get some sort of anecdotal data from businesses in the area, and then do a larger survey of residents uh. Seasonal residents, uh visitors, anyone that wants to say, yeah, you know. Here's who I am, here's my number. I also did not have uh. Cell service in Port Clyde. When you look at, you know, Verizon's coverage map, it it would imply that. Or Clyde has, you know, five G. So so what we need to do is is then highlight um both, one, that it's inaccurate. Uh, and two, that there's like a real need, both from a public safety standpoint as well as an economic standpoint for them, right? That, you know, while they are certainly gonna care that um, you know, when there was the fire, folks. You know, had to use radios instead of cell phones and the complications that added, that that's one piece, but also, you know. Seven thousand people posting a photo of the lighthouse uh on the Verizon network matters to them, right? And so. Trying to tell the full story so that uh a carrier like Verizon, you know, sees the incentive to. Um, add a tower. There was some talk about um possible locations. That was all speculation at this point, and so. Um, no need to share anything there. I did share with the group after the meeting. Uh, the minutes from twenty twenty one, when this was last uh brought up, uh they, we had pursued. Putting a tower on the fire station property and it sort of uh that process obviously got shut down. Um, based on a couple of concerns that came up, but no other properties were explored uh at that time, so.
So I, before the meeting, I had talked to somebody at Verizon who said that. If we give them um cellphone numbers, particularly business phones or like Ryan Klein's phone, you know. Town phone. Um, I don't know why they were more concerned about businesses than residents, because we will do both, but. If we give them that information, they can um. Take the number and run it through and see where calls failed or were attempted and didn't. Didn't go through, so then they can track and gather all that information. So. Rob Kelly from the Community Development Corporation put together a survey form uh as a Google document. That will be um circulated in town and will put it on the town website, and then people can. Who are willing to share their phone number, their cellphone number um can. And put that on there, and then this information will go to um cell service providers. And then they can basically do the homework. We don't have to do the homework of places where it doesn't work. They'll do that. Um. So we'll be getting that out um to people. And then we'll take it from there. Yeah, Jane.
Yeah, um, I'm I'm a seasonal resident of Port Clyde and um. I I think anything that um people like me can do to contact Verizon or, you know, to tell them what the issues are. I mean, it depends on where you are in my house.
Right.
If whether or not there's service and like I've had my doctor's office call and the call immediately drops. Um, and we keep a landline just in case there's emergency.
Right.
But um I think there's a lot of people that would be willing to give feedback um.
Yes, and and it's gonna be important for us to collect those stories and even um, you know. At the post office from emergency services, all of all of these stories. Right. But the impacts, I think to have letters that go, you know, from all of us. Um, for us to collect a package of information so that they um. Hopefully, you know, because they're gonna just be persuaded by. Money, I assume. I mean, they're not doing this out of the kindness of their hearts for those of us who come here. But I do think that we can provide information like how many people ride the Monhegan Boat Ferry every year. How many people visit the lighthouse every year? It's not just our little town of twenty six hundred year round people that are being impacted, so. Um, and I know stories from, you know, home health nurses that have had trouble, so we're. We're gonna try and collect all of this information that hopefully will have an impact, but um. We shall see. Did somebody else have a question? Yeah.
Do you know why they didn't want to put the cell power at the fire station?
Think there were some concerns with uh butters as well as uh some certain right of way. So the water district has a right of way over. A portion of the property and so, I mean, those are the two main reasons that came up.
Is there a specific reason why there's a focus with Verizon? Because I have U S Cellular and have had it for ten years and I have great service. Down on the dock, the new landing. And at home.
I think that.
I got it when I worked for the fishermen, that in.
Frankly, the way that it works.
And that U S Cellular, it was unreal. I always have.
The way that it works now is they all share towers.
Yeah.
And so um, really, you just need anyone that's willing to pay to build a tower down here.
Yeah.
And so I don't think that we would be picky, you know, we wouldn't turn down.
With T-Mobile too.
I think anybody that was willing to build a tower, we would work with.
Be helpful for everyone.
So is there a follow up meeting or are we, will the next thing be getting people to fill out this Google Doc?
Follow up via email uh to get word out there for the the survey, so. Stay tuned for that. Share it wide and far with all of your friends and family and acquaintances.
All right, thank you. Um, Brandon, your report?
I have a couple of. Um, certificate of appointments to for us to sign, so I'll pass those down.
Sorry.
Budget Committee, Harbor Committee, Emergency Services Committee, those are the ones, so Budget Committee is just uh. Um, otherwise, uh, you know, I'd mentioned the main thing going on is, you know, the calls that we're getting or when am I getting my. Property tax bill. Uh, folks should get it this week. Um, but again. If anybody's like very excited to pay it, you can just call. I was surprised how many people were uh, you know, so uh, yes, top notch citizens.
Like to get it off their mind, right?
Right, right.
Right. Not be win.
Um, but you can call, if you don't want to wait for your bill, you can call the town office. We will tell you the amount and you can pay it um immediately. Uh. Otherwise, we're just sort of working on uh switching out of the summer season and into fall, and so, you know. In October, uh. Bloats will come out, porta potties will come out, uh. Trash cans. What's that?
I said, in Port Clyde, can't they stay there?
At least one will stay uh at the public landing in Port Clyde, yeah. Um, and one dumpster will, uh but not full. Um, and then. Uh, you know, the ramp will come out of uh drifting. That will probably be, you know, we just had some high tides again, and so. Yes, Steve was back down there to um repair the the base of the ramp, and so. I just want to make sure that folks understand that, you know, anytime we have a ten foot tide or higher, it gets washed away and Steve is down there. Shoveling it by hand, and so um.
Does anybody have a yellow sticky? I just wanna note. That um Sandra Roke has been elevated to a regular member of the Emergency Services Committee.
Just leave that one on top.
Okay, all right.
Green, thank you.
That's fine. Yeah, I don't care what color it is. Thank you.
Uh, our Parks and Rec Director will be uh out of town for the next uh couple of weeks. Uh, she's getting married in Italy. They're excited. Yeah, yes. But uh, so in the meantime, any Parks and Rec concerns uh can come straight to me. You may see me lining a soccer field uh in the middle of the day uh. So that uh I don't continue to pile on uh Stevie's plate. Um, otherwise, not a ton. Um, working on some of the projects that have been talked about, but that's. That's really it for this group for now.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have any feedback about the um protest in Port Clyde? Were there any issues?
No, I got no feedback this time, no issues. Um.
And I was wondering, when they do something like that, do they have to let the town know that they're gonna be coming in, not a town that. Do things like this?
They, the first time they let Ryan know, uh, which was very helpful and appreciative. Um. This time they didn't. I mean, it's it's really just public property, public space. You know, I was a little disappointed that um. You know, messages were written even in chalk um on like the the public landing, just because. Then it invites a. A response also in chalk, and now our harbor master is a way to. Just control it and shut down any sort of back and forth narrative and keeping things civil is spending his days. Washing sidewalks, um, you know, and so it's, there's just better uses of his time. Um. And so I think in the future, you know. What I would ask of protesters from any side on any issue is make your signs and then bring them with you and maybe. Don't use chalk on the public property.
Public property, but it's owned by the town. I mean, shouldn't they have a permit to. Protest on.
It's a constitutional right, so.
First Amendment.
Yeah. And, you know. And chalk certainly isn't considered vandalism, you know, it goes away next time it rains, but you know, it's really just, you know.
Well, and it's not like a like a parade or something where, you know, traffic would be impacted, things that might. Require permits or something like that.
I've asked about uh the signs too. I've noticed that sometimes some of those signs aren't getting removed. Is that like your temporary sign ordinance on that kind of thing? When protesters are leaving signs on one thirty one.
Yeah, that falls under the same sort of temporary uh sign, you know.
Some disappeared and some didn't, so.
Any anytime you're putting out a sign, uh especially one within the town's, you know, right of way, so alongside the road, um. You are uh expected to put your contact information on the back of the sign so that you can be uh. You know, reached out to if needed. There are times that um like if that doesn't happen, that we will, you know, remove the sign and just throw it away. Typically not based on the messaging that's on the sign unless it was like something, you know, vulgar. Um, but. When we're most likely to do it is when uh. Like a couple of examples, uh sometimes they'll put it in front of like a a view of a cove. And frankly, nobody lives here to see any sort of sign or advert advertisement um in front of the water, and so we'll take those and. It's not easy to move them out of the view and up the road. I typically just throw them away. Uh, there's other times where folks, um if there's no contact info, if there's contact info, I'll call the person, tell them they can come get their sign. Folks, you know, claimed that a road was private when it was a town road. Picked up that sign and taken it as well.
And then there was the notorious sign about dogs on Driftin' Beach.
That was before my time.
Purported to be a town sign, but was not.
Yes.
Right. All right, committee reports, the planning board.
The planning board met on August twenty-sixth. An application from David Miller for a gravel parking area was considered. It was run through site review standards and it was approved. Then there was a discussion about contract zoning, which is known by other names. And I think the planning board is trending in the in the direction that the town does need to amend ordinances for compliance, that the waiver option will not help the housing on seventy-three. So they know what's coming ahead is there'll be public hearings and a special town meeting to consider ordinance changes. And there's gonna be communication with the CDC to make sure the town knows exactly what they're planning and what ordinances need to be amended in order to make the best use of that property.
What's their timeline by when they would need any ordinance changes?
Well, since there's no current application or plans, I don't think they feel hemmed in by a timeline or a deadline. They are gonna invite Rob Kelly to a planning board meeting and talk to him about that very issue.
So it might well work for it to just be on a regular
It might, it might, because nothing's moving quickly.
Okay. And then you have the the doc thing is on September twenty-third, twenty?
Twenty, yeah, it's whatever, the twenty, twenty-third.
Yes.
Yep.
The Board of Appeals.
It met on August twenty-eighth for its organizational meeting. Abby Blom will be a full-time member. Steve Miller is still the chair. He was voted in as the chair. Bill Reinhardt is the vice chair. And Bill Reinhardt is also secretary. And that's it. It was done.
So Bill Reinhardt reads emails, so if we need emails sent to the Board of Appeals, we can
Very good.
make sure that
Very good.
Because I know Steve
Right.
Miller isn't
Right.
keen on computer use, let's say.
Correct.
But we're not aware of any appeals, so it's still fine. The Harbor Committee. The Budget Committee has not met. Cemetery.
The Cemetery Committee met on September fourth, and we did a tour of Seaside Cemetery, or they did a tour of Seaside Cemetery with Dawn De Sexton. And she wanted to point out the work that had been done, tree work that had been done. Two large trees were taken out and a lot of dead limbs were taken down to help create a safer cemetery. She also pointed out about seventy-five stones that are in need of repair. They're either broken or have fallen over or semi-buried in the ground, so you can't see them anymore. A lot of old stones. They're working on their policy and guidelines for the cemetery. Dawn talked about the main old cemetery committee and a workshop that she would like to do possibly next year, but she's not sure because they're really backed up with work. So she's gonna talk to them about that. That would be a four-day event when it's planned. She is getting, Dawn De Sexton is getting prices for gate repairs or possible replacements, but she's finding that they're very expensive, so she's gonna continue to do research on that along with the committee. And Dawn asked me along with the committee for a three-month pause for non-rate payer plot sales. They're in the process of, they've done a lot of research, that you had asked, they do a lot of research for the fees and things. And in the process of doing that, they're gonna try to come in in November with their policies and things and possible fees for non-rate purchasers, but in the meantime, Dawn has had several people contact her about purchasing or have purchased plots, plots, they are what they call non-rate payers.
You mean the people who don't pay taxes in St. George?
So she would like to have this three-month pause so that they can look at these fees and and then come back with a fee structure for those plots and then go from there.
Well, we did talk about this summit at a meeting not long ago.
Yes.
And speaking just for myself, I'm not comfortable saying that we're gonna charge different kinds of people different amounts to buy a plot at the cemetery, particularly if there isn't some evidence or compelling reason for making a decision like that. And I know, I don't know if that, this applies here, but usually when governments want to institute some kind of moratorium on things, there are very specific statutory requirements for what you have to do. And I I'd be surprised if this was the kind of thing that fell under that, but I'm curious what other select board members think. And and even what you think, Tammy, you're the liaison.
Well, she wants the pause so that they they have done a lot of research. Susan, who's on the committee, has helped do a lot of research, and they're trying to put all the research together to come up with a fee structure.
But it's not like there's gonna be a run on the bank between now and, let's say, you know, February first, when they get their research together. How many people could possibly buy plots between now and then? You know, okay, five. It doesn't mean, you know, there'll be no more spaces there.
Dawn had to go on Saturday for a non-rate payer and they wanted to purchase a plot, and I'm thinking that if this, you know, this news about, they don't charge extreme amount of money. And she gets a lot of, I can't think of the word, she gets a lot of people contacting her on information about being to go there when they pass away. And she's, there's, you know, it's, it's starting to gets crowded in there, this, they, you know, they're slowly filling up, and she'd like to make sure that residents and taxpayers have
Or snips.
Right.
But why, why, why is that? Why should?
It's a municipal service right now. It's not a private cemetery like it once was.
It's, you know.
There's oftentimes different rates for, you know, in-town residents versus out of town.
So, so if somebody comes to us with, you know, all of that information and arguments, then I feel like we'd be in a good position to make a decision. But to just say in the abstract, you know, that somebody wanted to go there on Saturday, who isn't a resident, and we don't know, maybe they don't live here now, but their grandparents are buried there or ancestor, you know. It just feels like we're, we wouldn't be making a decision based on solid information.
Well, like I said, they put together all the information, but she would like this pause so that they can, you know, make a good decision about what they should do going forward because she's getting a lot of people asking that.
What do other people think?
It's just a pause for three months so she can completely investigate and come back to the select board with good information.
I feel like we don't need the pause. I mean, she can come back in three months and with the information, but I guess I'm not comfortable with the pause.
Brian, what do you think?
I don't I don't guess I would feel either way, but I mean.
Is the pause for everybody or just non-rate payers? Like what if I pop off? Get in there. And I pay taxes here.
I thought what we were saying is that if you pay taxes here, it shouldn't matter, right?
Well, that's what I, ah, non-rate payer.
So, so the pause would only be for non?
That's what I understood. If you want, I can check with Dawn and, you know, or you can send Dawn an email and ask her about it.
I I don't know why there's so much concern from this board. I I, it seems so bizarre to me that there wouldn't be like some sort of priority afforded to the folks whose tax dollars are maintaining this property year over year. That's
But again, I think we would need to know, what if it is somebody with family there? And, you know, you've got people, we have lots of people whose families have owned property in St. George and they come here every summer for forty years. You know, they, obviously, they're paying taxes, but say, you know, they come to their cousin's cousin's house and they don't own it. You know, I just feel like unless we have clear rules, it it's problematic until all of that is ironed out, so.
Well, they're not saying they don't want to sell them to non-rate payers, right?
Not yet.
It would just be
It would just be a different rate. And I don't see a problem with that. It's a musical sight.
I don't know, I frankly, I I think it's problematic for tax dollars to pay for services to folks that are not contributing to the the tax bill here. You know, we don't allow it at the transfer station. You know, if somebody from out of town was, you know, wanting to use our Parks and Rec facilities, you know, there's a fee associated with that, like when Dutch Soccer Academy comes down, like, you know, I I don't know why the cemetery would be any different than it should be.
But some are people can use the transfer station even if they don't live here and they're just here for a while.
I don't know how they would get a dump sticker if they're just visiting for two weeks.
They would have to be taxpayers to get a dump sticker.
Well, sometimes a landlord leaves a dump sticker that you put in the front of your car.
You're not supposed to do that.
Well, that's what I'm bringing forward.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're making a motion, it will get voted on. If you're making a motion, it'll get voted on.
Well, then I would like to make a motion that Dawn is allowed to have a three-month pause on non-rate payers to research this and come back with fees and structures.
So we're not voting on any kind of structures, just giving
No, it's just you would like the time to research this with the committee and come back with a
Second law.
What? Jane had asked that they do come back, you know, look at other taxes and what they do. And so they want to be able to do that and come back with good information.
Right.
It may not change. It may just be, it's fine the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, I, that, that'll be great to have their insight and recommendation about what we should be charging. But I, until then, and until we have a clear set of rules, you know, I'm not really, I'm not.
So, well, that's not, we're waiting for a second right now.
I know, put me in second place there. So all in favor? Opposed? So, the motion failed. And and I do
Once again, clarify for me, why? So De Sexton is a staff member and doing their day-to-day job here. Why their day-to-day is being managed by a vote in a select board?
Because the select board is the only group authorized by the voters to set the prices for the cemetery.
We're not asking about setting prices.
Wow, but you're asking us to, to stop
Right, but
selling.
But meaning I could fire the Sexton and no grapes could be sold to anybody for three months. And you know what I mean? Like, I I I'm just trying to, again, get clear on the boundary between when I manage staff and when you all manage staff. I think that's important for us to all understand.
I agree with that, but as you know, at the town meeting in May, we, the select board, were authorized to set the policies and procedures and prices for the cemetery. And this affects that, and so that's what this vote is about. And I also think it would be, I would like it if you asked Bill Kelly if there are any issues about you know, putting moratoria on things like this or charging different prices to different people. I mean, maybe it is just like the transfer station, and that would be useful information to the committee. But if you're treating different groups of people differently, you know, he he may have some advice that's worth weighing into this conversation for the future.
Well, I will let the committee continue their research. If they can't get clear based on what they find from other towns, then we can
Right.
Call our lawyer about it.
Well, no, somebody, somebody was asking a question about civil rights. I mean, I don't
That was a cellphone.
Sorry. But there's no civil right to own a a cemetery plot, so that would be applicable here, but Susan?
Just, just so I can hit, just I can enter again. What I'm confused at is you had asked at one meeting that we get comparison fees from various towns.
Right.
In- including how many towns are actually charging extra for non?
Well, I don't, you know, your committee, the first we knew of treating people from who are not property owners in St. George differently than property owners was when Tammy came to us at a meeting and told us that you all were thinking about that. So that wasn't really a charge from the select board, but if it is something that the committee wants us to think about, I'm totally open to thinking about that. I just am not comfortable making a decision based on, you know, anecdotes.
Susan, is that a policy that you all have seen anywhere else? Did you all come up with it?
Trying to think of how many towns I submitted. Maybe fifteen, and there weren't that many that were charging extra.
Were there some?
There were some.
Right, so it is a charge from the select board, right? They were charged to bring back recommendations for the policies and the and the fees, like whether or not the select board, you know, likes them or, you know, but like they are
Brandon, we do not have recommendations. We do not have the comparison information. We've made our vote. That's it for tonight.
My, but my question wasn't answered, and I would appreciate that it was, because it's it's a theme that has reoccurred a few times and that we have talked about, and it's comes down to like, when do we? When do I, like, I I I'm, I have to manage the staff. That is my job. How do I know when I'm able to manage the staff or when you all are going to vote on how to manage this staff? It is a fair question.
It is a fair question, but it's like with the Harbor Committee. You know, the Harbor Committee brought to us after months of discussion a list of what they wanted to charge for, you know, different kinds of users of the Port Clyde Landing, and we voted on that and even revisited that on their recommendation. And so that was included input from the harbor master and the committee, and it came to the select board. And that's what I want to see about this, since we're the group that has to make the decision about what gets charged. Bring us this information and we welcome their hard work. It's wonderful that that you all are volunteers are doing this to help make recommendations to us. I just don't want to decide based on anecdotal information. That's the reason for my vote.
But again, can you just clarify for me so I am, I'm understanding? When you requested A comparison plot fees. Now regardless of, um, non-taxpayer, forget that issue. Do you want, well, what do you want? To see? Do you want to see all those printouts that I? Of what the different plot fees are for each town and then you'll decide. What we're going to charge?
Well, this, I think that your, your committee and the Sexton together. Should look at that information, figure out which of those towns are like our town. You know, I don't know if Camden Cemetery is owned by the town or an association, but you know. That may or may not be a comparable town as opposed to Stonington or Harpswell or somewhere. Um, so you all do all of that and then bring your recommendations to us. We don't need to see the fifteen towns or whatever. Just, you know, bring us your recommendations and your rationale. And then. We'll vote. Does, yeah, does that, and does anybody else want to weigh in? I don't want to speak for everybody.
Well, the motion was whether or not they could have a pause. It wasn't to approve it.
Right, but then Susan was asking, what do we want when they do come back?
But to be fair to Brandon's question, if the Sexton is a staff member, why can't he make that decision instead of us?
Not me.
No, why can't Brandon? He's in charge of staff, so why wouldn't that be his decision? Why do we have to vote on whether or not he can approve a pause?
Well, I don't think he would be able to. Institute a pause on charging fees at the Port Clyde Landing either. Do you think you would?
I think that I could. If Brian was like, I need more, I need time to do some research before I sell any more commercial permits. I think I would say that that was allowed and that I would have come ask.
But we already have a list of permits and.
Right, but if you were to back, you. Use this as, in the same analogy that you did earlier, right? That we're not there in the process yet, right? Like you're waiting on the, the recommendations.
Right. I mean, part of the problem here is as far, I don't know. Whether we've made any decisions about policies for this cemetery since it became owned by the town like eight years ago or nine years ago.
Which is why I felt like a pause was a fair. You know, request.
Right, but we've been running it for nine years and then now all of a sudden you're going to pause something. But. If. Uh, you know, if. I don't know.
Well, we voted. I mean, I don't know why we're going on about this.
Well, except that Brandon feels like. Where's the line? And to me, the line is because. We're supposed to be deciding what we charge and. It's not about once we've decided that, what you do. Cause once we've decided that, you guys run the day-to-day. All right, so did the cemetery committee have any other? Um.
Was a question.
Oh, sorry, Rodney.
If this is a town property. Can we bring that question to the voters whether they would want to have? Out-of-towners pay more?
We brought it to the board at the town meeting and they delegated that authority to the select board.
Uh, they did. So what if we raise the prices? But if you're a town resident, taxpayer, you get a discount, kind of like a military discount. Or senior citizen discount. You know, Ed.
And that's what they overview when the, when the cemetery committee finishes their recommendations and presents them to the, the boards. We're just not there yet.
Um. The emergency services committee. To. Think I sent you all that stuff about that report, didn't I? Cause I didn't. Um.
You, you want me to report out?
Yeah, would you? I'll chime in as I remember things.
Uh, we talked about a few different things, um. One being the loaning of medical equipment like walkers, uh. They have seats for over a, a toilet, et cetera, um. The town cannot take on the administration of that because, uh. From a liability perspective, these, this is often equipment that is prescribed by a doctor, which means our paramedics are not able to do that. Um. The CDC used to do it. They are no longer. Uh, interested or have the ability to do it, uh. And so, you know. There was a discussion about whether or not. There was anyone that was willing to host that service. Uh, it does not appear so. Uh, the Knox Clinic has a large attic full of equipment though that you can. Get things from. And so there was a suggestion that. Neighbor-to-neighbor pursue, um. You know, being the. Transported for somebody to go get the equipment or to go get the equipment themselves and bring it back. Uh, but anyway, at this point, it's not a thing that the town can take on. I'd offered to be a storage solution, um, but there's not a partner that's willing to administer it.
But, but Mike Felton did say. That if they receive calls, they're willing to be a resource, like the Knox Clinic has stuff. Here's their number.
Yes, if you call the CDC. Um, they'll tell you to call the Knox Clinic.
Yeah, I mean, we were hoping, I was hoping that, um. Some organization in town, if, if we were willing and able to store this, cause Brandon says we have space. What if the Route seventy-three fire station?
It could find space. I just, if that was the only barrier, we could make it work.
That, but, um, because of the medical legal issues. You know, the town didn't feel like it could be dispersing the stuff that if the CDC or neighbor-to-neighbor or somebody else were willing. To take on. Dispersing it to people and getting the calls, but. Uh, so far, no takers. And.
Next, we talked about, uh, community paramedicine, uh, new regulations were put out. Uh, that require a formal education side, uh. None of our current, uh. Paramedics or EMTs, uh, are certified, but six of them had signed up for our class. Uh, then that class got canceled because of. An instructor, uh. Was no longer available to teach the class. This was the only place that you could take. The course besides a two-year program at Prescott. And so, um, unless the board or state legislature, uh. Changes it or extends the sort of. Grace period, you know, as of. November, we won't have a community paramedicine program.
Wow.
Oh my God.
Right, so this is all, as Brandon said, this is all because the legislature. Passed new requirements. New certification requirements for people who provide community paramedicine. And, um. So Dr. Lowry, who is a town resident and chair of our emergency services committee. Is also the chair. Of the state's emergency, the community paramedicine committee. So he, um, was going to be in touch with the licensing. People at the state. And see if they will extend. This deadline. And I did say. That the select board's been willing to send letters in the past if. You know, obviously this is a program that means a lot to our community and he said he would let us know if he needs a letter like that. He was hoping that the agency responsible for the licensing. Could, um. On their own initiative, extend the deadline, um. And obviously Mike Felton came to the meeting because. You know, the CDC has this telehealth hub grant and they're very eager to moving forward with, um. Collaborating with this community paramedicine program on that, so it would impact that as well. Um, so stay tuned, I guess, is the problem with that and.
Can I just?
Sure.
Still lives in effect until November? You can still access those services?
Yes. Just assume that if, if somebody needs wound care or, you know, their doctor wants to fax a prescription for. You know. Coumadin or whatever the different services that they provide. That they will do it until you hear otherwise, but, um. But it is at risk because of these regulatory changes.
At least we got Benji Lowery on our.
Yes, we're very lucky to have him. Um, and the other thing that the emergency services committee is going to work on this year is, um. A capital, um, budget. For, um, emergency services equipment because Brandon requested their help. With that, and so. They'll be, um, mostly for the fire department, right?
I think the ambulance as well. I think both departments have some sort of like aspirational, um. Goals that, you know, I would probably not build into a capital improvement plan just based on. Sort of my own lack of expertise, uh, around bulk departments, um. Like a, a water tower in town, for example, uh, and so wanting to at least make sure that. All of those pieces are, you know, the things that would be, you know, required to provide the highest service, uh. Are considered as I build out the sort of town-wide capital improvement plan. And then I think the last piece talked about at the committee was the, uh, reckless driving happening on Walston Road. I acknowledged, uh. The increased police presence in town and was grateful for it. I also expressed frustration that it was. At eight, at eight AM rather than, um. Yeah, um. And, you know, Ryan Colson, who is on the department confirmed that you do need to call nine-one-one. Uh, when it is happening, if you want it to be officially recorded on the log.
But I also have heard from people that they're concerned about calling nine-one-one and having their names. Um, broadcast on the scanner because they fear retribution from. The people that are perpetrating. This behavior and so I, I think. That we're at a point where it might make sense for the select board to ask. The sheriff, um, to come down. And have a community meeting about this because I think people would be willing to come. To a public meeting who are afraid to call nine-one-one or be. Somebody who might be a personal target if they do something. And I'm curious what other people think about that idea of inviting the sheriff.
I'm not against that idea, but they don't broadcast your name if you call. They don't complain.
Yeah.
I mean, they wouldn't even, you don't even ask them your address. You could be a bystander and you'd be driving through and call nine-one-one. Your name would not be broadcast on them.
They will ask your name.
They ask your name.
They write it down. Doesn't go over the air. That's good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do people feel like it would be helpful to invite the sheriff to come down? I get, my feeling is. That we've heard a lot about this from the community. We, some of us have seen. A fairly alarming, uh, video of. The conduct. And if the sheriff isn't responding, I would like the community to see that. At least the select board did what we could to get a response. You know, we don't have. Anything, we don't have law enforcement capability, so the only thing we can do is invite the sheriff and Brandon's talked to them. And it's great that they send people, but. We don't need them here at seven-thirty in the morning. We need them here ten, twelve, at nine.
Well, I think, I think Brandon has talked to. Pat Polk, the sheriff who lives in St. George, and he must know about it, so. I, I don't think we really need a meeting, although I'm certainly open to hearing from obviously residents about it. I noticed some new tire marks on one thirty-one, so someone's trying it out there. They're pretty impressive too. Circular ones.
And it's very damaging to the pavement.
I don't want to be running by when that happens.
Yeah.
Or walking.
Well, I mean, Brandon just said to us that he's frustrated with the response, so. Um. What, what do I?
And that's not to say that they are never here at night. I know that they are and, uh, you know, Ryan has said that they have tried to catch them and. It wasn't happening that night and that, that's the way that I've.
I'm sure it's.
Sometimes, so I am.
It's not easy to catch them.
Press, I'm frustrated, sort of pointing blame, although I will say if the department is. Stretched thin, I would be more than happy to do away with the seven-thirty AM coverage until we get this resolved, but it doesn't seem to be.
Well, I don't think it starts to ask. I mean, I think you can ask them to come. They may not. Would others support that? Support asking them? Sure.
Heard it asked.
All right. Why don't you relay that, um, we would like him to come down? And invite the public to, um, convey their concerns directly to the sheriff.
Do you want me to invite them?
Yes, please. Or, I mean, I could do it, but it's, you can do it. You can just tell them we would. We want the community to be able to hear from them and also share what they're seeing, what they're hearing and.
We're talking about just doing this at a select board meeting? Or especially?
No, I was thinking like whenever it works for him. He's probably. Got way less, uh, time than most of us.
But I think. I mean, not to tell him what to do, but I mean, he needs to reiterate. In regards to nine-one-one, that people should call nine-one-one.
Yeah.
I mean. We've all had to do it. You know, you put your big girl panties on and you call because, yeah, you need it recorded. There needs to be a record of it.
Well, and I think some people were thinking. Is this an emergency? Should they not be taking up the nine-one-one line? Um, now at the emergency services committee, people said. People should not worry about that, that they should make the call, but I do think it would be helpful for him to convey whatever message. He wants about that. Now you said people are concerned about calling and having their identity out there. Right. Coming into a public meeting and being on a Zoom meeting, I mean, they're gonna have, you know, everybody in the room. This person, all they need to do is watch the Zoom meeting, or they could attend the meeting and sit in the back and watch what's going on.
But that's for every crime. I, I mean, you need to stand up and. Make your voice heard.
People come to this meeting if they're concerned about their identity. Well, then I'll feel like we'll have done everything in our power to address this. If Brandon's calling, if we're telling people to call nine-one-one. If we invite the sheriff here, then the community will see that we're doing our best to address something. That we're hearing a lot about.
Well, yeah, either they'll come to the.
Right. All right, thank you. Um. The TIF committee is on pause. The Conference of Plan Committee hasn't met. We'll be doing that conservation commission.
Okay, um. They did meet on September fourth. And, um. Talked about under old business, they're still trying to. Finalize the, the Old Woods Farm Preserve, um. Homeowners Association, agreement with the homeowners association. And the Land for Mains Future Board, which funded the, helped, helped fund the purchase of that property. And, um, I, I recently walked the trail in there. It's just beautiful. I don't know if anyone else has explored it yet. It's worth the visit. There is a parking lot now, an official parking lot. When you drive in and on that. Into that private development on the private road, there's a parking lot on your left for about three cars. And it, and then you're not supposed to park at the very end of the road where the trailhead is and, and, uh. And a, you know, you know, map and, and the, the trail is nicely marked now, so. It's harder to get lost. Okay, um. And so they did, and on Fort Point, the, the state has come in and, and bush hogged it. Volunteers took care of the berm that is the old fort. I think I mentioned that last time. On the marsh out here in the six acres that the town owns. Um. I, I joined a crew, the crew and we launched canoes from that new canoe rack past the library. And loaded one canoe with all the pieces of a picnic table. Which promptly led it to hit the bottom of the mard, which is only about six inches deep because of the, the drought, but we managed to pull the thing over across the. The water to the, this property, which is really for the public, for all of us, only accessible by. By canoe or kayak or when the, when it freezes, you could go over the ice. Um, and we, we assembled the. Um, and we, we assembled the picnic table. Um, and after clearing some brush, and so there's a nice little picnic table you can go to with a view of the water. It's very, very pretty spot. Um, so that's done. Meadow Brook, there's a, this is sort of technical. There's a, on the Meadow Brook Preserve over on the other side of the peninsula, there's a update on, they have to do a preserve for a, a report for the uh, Georgia's Riverland Trust, which holds the conservation easement on that property. Uh, there, an overall trail map has been completed. And hopefully that'll be available to all of us at some point, because that's great for recreation. They're talking about maybe seeing if students from the school would be, could be involved in an ash tree project, because of course the ash trees, there's a whole lot of them on Fort Point are threatened by the annual ash war. And it seems like it's just inevitable. It's a matter of time. It's expensive to treat them. Maybe some trees could be treated along the trail and let the others go or something. I don't know. But they might need to be, it'd be very hard to harvest anything in there because you can't get in there with heavy equipment. Under new business, open space plan, they're waiting for input from the select board on how town plans to approach this project. Who is going to lead will require a lot of time and needs to be empowered by the select board. Um, so there's Aaron is working, Stu, uh, Rich are working on that.
I think that Ken Alberger and I had talked about um, him coming to a meeting in either late September or October to talk about that at the select.
Right, I mean, it's nothing happening my way, but it's long term. And, you know, defining what open space is, so we all know what we mean when we're saving open space. Yeah, on that um, pier project proposed out of Sea Smoke Lane, there were, there were a couple of people that, that at the meeting that uh, are opposed to where the pier would be in the view of uh, Drifting Beach. Um, the Conservation Commission uh, pretty much concluded that they don't really have any say. It's not a, you know, the aesthetics are not really an issue for, for the, of conservation and not in their, in their responsibility or purview. But they had, they had a little discussion about it. And I guess, you know, really concluded that it's up to the planning board. And we'll be, we'll see what happens there. Greg, Greg Martin, Jolene Godfrey spoke to the need of a, of, of what they're, what they think is a need for a dark sky ordinance for the town, which would be, you know, shading lights, having them point down, turning lights out. Uh, I think we do have an ordinance regarding shielding new lights, but, but not for any existing thing. And that would maybe be more of a planning board issue, not, not for the Conservation Commission. Although some of the members like the ideas of dark skies. On the uh, and then lastly, they um, talked about the, the uh, solar panel project proposed for the school. Already talked about that tonight, so I don't need to go over that. But it does, it does say in their minutes that the C C, the Conservation Commission hopes the board will reconsider because there is zero risk to the school board. And it does say the next school board meeting is September sixteenth at six thirty, I assume with the school. Great, that's it.
Susan?
Steve, so is, is it Old Woods Road?
Old Woods Farm, I believe. Is that the name of the road too, Brandon? Old Woods Farm Road, yeah.
Is that now officially, that trail officially open? Because I've been waiting to see an announcement. I thought Ken said that it will be announced when.
They haven't had a grand opening, but.
But it is, we can use it.
I mean, I walked in there. It's, it's all signed and, and I don't think anything bad would happen if you were to go check it out.
Well, um, maybe you could let him know that we're, I, I remember that too, that he, he had said.
Yeah.
Wait for them to let us know. So if, if he's ready for people to go, that would be good news for him to share.
Okay, I won't tell. You go ahead. Yeah, I, I think they wanna have a, you know, grand opening at some point.
Yeah.
But all the signage is up and everything's in place and trail's blazed.
Selfish committee.
Um, they meet September twenty-second.
Can I, can I weigh in on Steve's comment about Old Woods Road, please? I had my hand up.
I'm sorry, I, I had my back to you, Lorraine. Go ahead.
That's okay. So we still do not have a signed agreement with the town over the usage of the road for access to the property. It's being hung up by L M F. We're waiting to hear from them. Brandon and I have a tentative agreement as to what to put before the H O A in order to get that document signed and official. So technically, technically, the road is not officially opened for access to the property. That being said, the parking lot is in, the trails are in, people have been using it respectfully. But we do need to get this document signed before any official opening occurs. And that's in the best interest of all the property owners, including the town.
Thanks very much, Lorraine, for clarifying, because I wasn't fully aware of that.
Great.
But the road says private.
It is private. That's why. Yeah, the, the Land for Maine's Future provided some grant funding for the town to purchase um, that property. And so it's their lawyers and the town's lawyers and the neighborhood association's lawyers. But it's kind of hung up with these state lawyers or the Land for Maine Future.
It's going to happen.
Yes. I remember that now. Thank you, Lorraine. Solid waste.
Solid waste committee meets um, September sixteen, two P here, two P M here at the town office.
Great. Parks and Rec?
We met September fourth. It was rescheduled from the second, I believe, they didn't have people to come to their meeting. So um, the scoreboards in the school are installed. They're up, running perfect. Uh, Simpson's Electric installed them, hundred percent paid by boosters, no town money. Senior programs, we talked about that a little bit, and a couple of things they wanna do. Ashley's working coming up with a regular social hour type thing where it's just free time for people to get together and talk instead of a structured. And a couple, and maybe doing more joint trips with the Thomistin Rec. She'd be talking to according to Justice, the rec director and Thomistin. Uh, other than that, it was mostly soccer. Uh, fifth and sixth and third and fourth, they expect to have enough kids to do two teams for each grade level, which is great. But uh, they had some coaches lined up, but uh, be where they don't have enough teams set up yet. I don't remember if I'd shared those names yet. Uh, the first grade, first, second grade clinics are just, they don't do a team. They just do clinics on Saturdays. And the person they thought was gonna run it, I think, bowed out. So they're trying to come up with some people to do that. Uh, the rec currently doesn't do pre-K kindergarten soccer anymore like they used to. And they had talked to Jess Berry about doing that, but it sounds like that may not happen this year. So that's up in the air, too. And then they talked about doing their twenty-five, twenty-six goals, but that's gonna come. They're gonna work on that next meeting and get those to the select board. And Summer did talk to them a little bit about the select board meetings, that she came to the chairman meeting and kind of related what was told to them about their, our responsibility and their responsibilities. And it was it, a little bit about Ashley. I'll vacation for the next two weeks.
Well, thank the boosters from us for the scoreboards.
Yeah, those, those look elegant there.
I haven't seen them yet. We're gonna go with the next meeting, I think.
That's great. Resilience Committee.
The resilience committee had two meetings last week. One, their regular meeting as an overview of the two projects they're currently undertaking. Um, the first is the Cold Storage Factory Road Planning. And the, I think, first solid event is gonna be an abutters meeting um, from the roads to discuss options and get their feedback. Um, that has not been scheduled yet. It may be around October seventh to, or October fourteenth. Um, after the, a meeting with just the abutters, there's going to be a second meeting with a community-wide meeting to discuss options for those two roads. Um, then on their second project, the Community Resiliency Plan, um, we met on Friday in South Thomiston. And um, the public meetings that are going to take place October first and second were discussed. We discussed what our goals are or their goals for the meeting, um, the public meeting agenda, um, and also logistics and materials. So you should be seeing some publicity about those two meetings. The October second meeting will be held in St. George. The first meeting on the first will be held in South Thomiston. Any town member from any, any of the towns can attend one or both. Um, although the agenda will be identical for both of the meetings.
And those meetings are about the Climate Action Plan.
Right, which are, is now renamed the Resilience Plan.
Okay.
Yeah, yes. So.
So that's like an introduction to our town of what the plan will.
Right, right. And some fact gathering, you know, in terms from, anything from road washouts to um, other infrastructure, infrastructure issues that people have had on their properties due to storms.
So the, the Factory Road meeting.
Yeah.
How do the abutters be notified?
Um, I, there's gonna be direct notification to the abutters. That's not just gonna be a public notice. You'll, I, I think it's by email, but I don't really know.
My guess would be uh, mail, because we don't have email addresses for property owners. So the only thing I shared was mailing addresses.
Okay, yeah.
But if, if you have email, emails for your neighbors and you wanted to share them with Brandon, so they get quicker notification, you know.
Okay, I'll talk to you.
That, it's, it's, because I know, yeah. So we'll watch for information about an October second meeting about the new resilience, resilience plan. I thought that um, at the end of our meetings, we should start having a, you know, follow-up items for follow-ups so that we all are on the same page about any items that came up tonight um, that require follow-up. And I think the only one is Brandon's invitation to the sheriff. Um, people should keep an eye out for the link to that Google Doc about cell service. Um, and you know, we'll be having the special town meeting October twentieth and October second about the resilience plan. But I don't think we have any other follow-up things on anybody's to-do list.
All is coming.
Yes. Here, I thought this was gonna be a quick, short meeting, but um, and Tammy, I just wanna say about the cemetery um, recommendation. I think it would be easier if you're planning to make a motion from the committee that it didn't come up during the report. Like if they, you know how these other things where um, there are reports or votes. If it's an agenda item, like with an attachment and a recommendation from a committee, it's easier for people to think through ahead of time than if it kind of bubbles up in the context of a committee.
So you wanna know before committee reports?
Yeah, if you, if you let me know, after tonight, I'm gonna be doing the agenda for the meetings. Um, Brandon's, we work on them together, but he's got enough to do. And I said I would take over doing the um, the meeting agenda. So if anybody has from your committees a motion that you want made, let me know, like, say, Wednesday before we have a meeting on Monday. And that way, you can get from the committee, from the staff person, whatever backup information you want me to share with the agenda. You know, it might make it easier.
If I remember.
To, well, and since you have a committee member present, maybe she'll, she'll help you remember, but well, I'll try to remember to do that. So thank you, everybody. We'll see you on the twenty-second.
Oh, smoothly adjourned.
Oh, yeah, make a motion.
Second.
Everybody in favor. That's all five. Thank you.